Recording in progress.
I remind everyone that this is being recorded and I think broadcast over the cable TV as well. And if for some reason we lose our internet ability just to deal with the technicality, all things are continued until next month's meeting. But we've managed for two years to get through these meetings without such a technical problem. So I guess the first order of business is to deal with the minutes of last month. Someone want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
John, I've reviewed the minutes and move that they be approved as presented.
Oh, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, approved. So I'll call the first case, which is 1183 Highland Avenue. Harvey Family Dental PLLC applicant has applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections 5.1.1.5, 5.1.2, 5.1.3, and any other applicable sections of the zoning bylaw to waive strict adherence to parking and parking design requirements associated with the use of a dental practice. The subject property is located at 1183 Highland Avenue in the Business B District. Good evening and welcome back. We did receive your parking study and I'll just let you summarize what you'd like to summarize.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's good to see you guys again. And Daphne, good to see you too. Thank you for having us again. I'm glad that you all did get the parking study that was prepared by Van Assen Associates. I just wanted to just go back through just a quick overview of this matter. Not to rehash too much, but just want to confirm a couple of things. So the applicant Harvey Family Dental PLLC is looking to open a dental practice, which is an allowed use in the Business District. We discussed at the last meeting that the parking plan and design requirement waiver for that section of the zoning bylaws. I don't want to belabor that point because, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to put words into your mouth. But I think at the last meeting you had said that that was typically allowed as a matter of course. So without, I'd rather focus on the other matter that was, I think, more of a concern for the board than hopefully we've addressed with the parking study. So I would like to not focus too much on the parking design and parking plan and design requirement and focus more on the minimum off-street parking.
Well, I think that's appropriate unless some one of the members has a problem, but we recognize that buildings with older parking spaces don't comply and the only way to comply would be to eliminate parking spaces, which doesn't seem to make much sense. So as a matter of course, we do grant those waivers.
Okay. Well, I just want to give the other members an opportunity, but it doesn't look like anybody has any comments on that.
Yeah, I agree with John, I guess.
Thank you. So with respect to the minimum off-street parking, we're seeking a waiver for that requirement because we cannot comply with it as the premises is currently constituted. Just to recap that, the proposed use requires 12 and a half parking spaces under the zoning bylaws. That's one space for 200 square foot of space. This is a 2,500 square foot unit requiring 12 and a half foot, 12 and a half spaces. The other uses on site, including the proposed use, would require approximately 63 parking spaces. There's 30 spaces on site. At the last meeting, one of the concerns that the board had was having no data with respect to the intensity of parking onsite or within the area. So we did engage Van Assen Associates, which I was glad to hear that is someone that the boards worked with before. It's the engineering firm that I've worked with before in the past. And I was glad to hear that we were on the same page with that respect because I think they're very good to work with. But the parking study that was conducted was observed the onsite parking as well as the off-site on-street parking on Highland Ave. The parking engineer took the spaces within a reasonable walking distance from the premises. And, Daphne, is it possible to share my screen? So I am, I just want to pull up the figure one in the parking study. This is the area that Van Assen Associates determined was a reasonable walking distance. It's broken down into four zones. Zone one is this green area, which is the onsite parking. Zone two is the red hash marking, which is on Highland Ave going up to Rosemary Street to Oakland Ave, which at the intersection there. Zone three is the Oakland Ave portion in yellow. And zone four is the continuation of Highland Ave to May Street. And the parking, the parking study revealed that based on the onsite parking and the off-street parking, and I don't want to belabor all the points in the study because, you know, I know you all have it. You assuredly reviewed it and I don't want to have to, you know, review anything unless the board has any questions. But the conclusion of the parking study was that there is sufficient parking onsite and within the area off-site on on-street parking to support the proposed use. And so based on the conclusions of that, we were comfortable moving forward with the board with this. We're hopeful that with this parking study, this makes hopefully a very, very simple and easy application for the board at this point. Mr. Chairman, you made a very good point at the last meeting that, you know, my client, the applicant, would want this information as a business person as well. And you couldn't have been more right. This was very important to my client. They felt strongly that there was sufficient parking in the area before this. But after having, having the last meeting with the concern raised by the board, you know, they wanted to make sure that from a business standpoint, this made sense too. And they were happy to see that the parking study did confirm what they were hoping for and what they felt was the case. And so from both a business standpoint and from just a parking demand standpoint, the conclusion was very good for me and hopefully for the board as well.
Yeah. In my opinion, it's kind of ridiculous to suggest that dental patients are going to park on the street and walk a quarter of a mile. But I can disregard that. And if you just look at the onsite parking plus the zone two, the red, and zone three, there's, there was, on the date the survey was taken, plenty of parking. You know, I'll just add and warn for your benefit, there are going to be five or six days a year when the parking will definitely not be adequate when they have an event across the street at Memorial Field. When people fill the Sudbury parking lot and everything in sight. But I think this study demonstrates that on an ordinary day, there's going to be plenty of spaces. Anyone else on the board have a comment?
I concur with that. I think that the parking was sufficient. I agree with you, John, it's a bit far away, but I think the parking study was helpful to confirm there are sufficient off-street parking spaces.
Peter?
Yep, I agree, John. I also wasn't really considering zone four. Even looking at just zones one and two, it looks like there's a quick parking.
Yes, I think so. So someone want to make a motion to approve?
Sure, sure. Move that the applicant's request for a special permit under sections 5.115, 5.12, and 5.13 to waive strict adherence to the parking number of spaces as well as the parking design requirement associated with this dental use in the 183 Highland Avenue in the Business B District be approved.
Second that, Peter?
Yes, I do.
Yes, just all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're approved. One suggestion I'd pass on is I'd find some way to communicate to your patients, the onsite parking, because it's really not very obvious for people, but, you know, you can make an effort to point out to them that there's parking around behind the building if they, you know, hunt. I've long worried about this space and every time I go to Sudbury Farms, I drive behind just to kind of check out what's going on. And there always do seem to be spaces around behind the subway place. So good luck and welcome to Needham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody.
Good day, Council.
Alright, case number two, 329 Chestnut Street. Sueda Cervastava, and, excuse me, and Ashke Saxena applicants have applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections 3.2.2, 5.1.1.5, 5.1.2, 5.1.3, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to establish Code Wiz Needham, a private school that runs coding and robotics classes for 15 students ages seven years old to 17 years old with five staff persons and to waive strict adherence in parking and parking design requirements. The property is located at 329 Central Avenue, Needham, in the Chestnut Street Business District. Who is going to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, I will be speaking this evening on this matter?
Well, welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All the way from across the pond. So, so...
England?
Scotland, actually.
Oh, wow.
One of my favorite places.
The different background, this is the wallpaper in my in-laws' flat. So as indicated, this is for the property at 329 Chestnut Street, which is parcel 53 on Assessors Map 45. It's a commercial piece of property in the Chestnut Street Business District that contains 12,400 square feet of area with 80 feet of frontage on Chestnut Street. Currently, there's a two-story commercial building on the property that has also a finished basement that's occupied commercial space as well as 20 off-street parking spaces. This particular property has the benefit of an easement across the property next door that's numbered 315 to 317 Chestnut Street. That's the Costas Pizza property, Costas Pizza and the cleaners in there. And the easement basically wraps around the building so to provide access to the parking spaces on this property and then it means out, out to the side street there, you know, beyond the other side of the Costas building. So the building at 329 Chestnut Street is currently occupied by three different commercial spaces. On the lower level or the basement level is currently a vacant space. That's the area that would be proposed to be occupied by the Code Wiz business. On the first floor, the vast majority of the first floor, which is about 1,600 square feet, 1,500 square feet, is occupied by Alex Bejian, DMD for Bejian Orthodontics. Then a small part of the first floor, really just sort of a reception desk area and an entry vestibule, is occupied by Strength and Numbers Tutoring, which provides access to the stairs that go up to the second floor. And they occupy the entire second floor at about 750 square feet for a private tutoring and test preparation service. So Code Wiz wants, as indicated, take over the current vacant space in the basement of about 1,500 square feet. Code Wiz is a, basically a private educational type business that teaches programming and robotic skills with an emphasis on critical thinking and problem solving. There are currently Code Wiz locations in five different states. Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Florida, Georgia, and Texas. The vast majority of the locations are located in the Northeast in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. So it's an established operation that offers a very critical, very important skill to children generally between the ages of seven and 17. Classes are offered both in-person and virtual. So depending upon the operation, depending upon the class, it may be more in-person or more online. The proposal here is for a, basically an operation that will run when I get to the end, if we get to the positive determination, I'd ask for a wider range of hours. But the general range of hours to business will be between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, most of the time. The exception will be during school vacation weeks, in which case the operation will run from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Basically a full day because the kids will be out of school. So it's a full day of instruction for them. So classes are generally 50 minutes long and therefore there's a built-in 10-minute break between classes to provide, you know, for the drop-off and pickup. There would be a maximum of 15 students at any given time for a class. And so as I said, you know, that might be, you might have all those students be in-person. You might have some in-person, some virtual. That's going to fluctuate and vary. There will be a maximum of five teachers or staff at any given time. So basically, you know, when we get to the parking piece, you'll see it's based on 15 students and five staff. So the use itself requires a special permit under the bylaw as a private school, and that's been requested. There's no particular requirements in the bylaw that go with that. But I would say that this is the type of use that is beneficial to the town, well-suited to a commercial district like the Chestnut Street Business District and therefore would meet, you know, the sort of the general spirit of why these sort of uses are permitted in the first place. In addition, there is a special permit necessary for more than one non-residential use or structure on the lot. Similarly, there's no specific criteria for that other than that they not be sort of at odds with each other. And, you know, as I'll get into in a few moments, we don't think that there's any issue here with the uses in this building. In fact, they're very synergistic. So the last bit of relief that is necessary is a a nice little lot which has been in existence since prior to the early 80s when parking design requirements were adopted does not meet the particular design standards. So now let's talk a little bit about the parking counts. So Dr. Bejian's office on the first floor is about 1,600 square feet. And you can sort of analyze it a couple of ways, but the most conservative would be to say that it is a medical or dental use. And there's a category in the bylaw for parking for that of one space for 200 square feet. When you do those numbers, you come up with eight parking spaces required. Then with respect to the tutoring use on the upper floor, that is a sort of a general office type use or general business use. That's 750 square feet at one space for 300. It actually comes up to 2.5. You round up to three spaces required for that use. And then the Code Wiz proposed use with 15 students and five staff, the standard is half of enrollment plus one for staff. So basically, when you do the calculation, I'm sorry. When you do the calculation for Code Wiz, it's one space for every five students plus one for staff. And when you do the calculation out, that comes to a total of eight spaces necessary for Code Wiz. When you add those up, the three uses, it's a grand total of 19 parking spaces required for all three businesses in the building. And there's 20 spaces on site, so there's one extra space on site. So from that perspective, there's enough parking. But more importantly, when you actually look at the function in the active use of the parking lot, the uses work well together. So my clients went out and actually did parking counts over a period of two weeks. The April 4th week and the April 11th week. And they counted parking at 9:00 a.m., 12:00 noon, 1:00 p.m., 3:00 p.m., 4:00 p.m., 5:00 p.m., 6:00 p.m., and 7:00 p.m. And in doing all those counts, there were never more than five cars in the parking spaces at any given time. And the five cars were only observed on certain days at 4:00 p.m., 5:00 p.m., and 6:00 p.m. So basically sort of right in the middle of when Code Wiz is operating their normal schedule. So even with five cars in the space in the lot, that's 15 spaces left over. There is well more than adequate parking in practice in addition to the fact there being one additional parking space on paper. So with all that, we would ask that the board grant the necessary special permits so that this business, which will be a boon and an asset to the town, can come on it. I think we lost John.
Ooh. There he is. Thank you, George.
Oh, John, Jonathan's here.
I get to take over again. Al Haig again. Let's see. Let's wait for John to join in.
Well, let me see if you want to. I can check and see if there's any comments from the attendee from...
Yeah, he's signing in. I think he just lost his video.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I'm probably going to have to switch computers. For some reason, this Zoom thing is not functioning correctly. And so I'm going to switch computers. I'll be back in a couple of minutes. Please continue.
Okay, Daphne, can you talk about who submitted comments?
Alright. We all, we got, we have comments from the planning board. And the planning board notes that it does not appear to be handicap accessible. The board recommends that the CBA check the building commissioner with the proposed need code with respect to both the building and parking accessibility requirements.
Let's just talk to George about that real quick. ADA compliance, handicap compliance, what, anything? George, have you looked into it? So I don't believe that's an issue here. This space has been used and occupied for commercial businesses open to the general public for many years. And the level of changes being made to the space are so low that I don't think it's going to trigger the need to provide access versus what's been there sort of previously. So, you know, generally speaking, under the ADA and under the mask code, if you have a business that has been open to the public all along, if you aren't doing work over a certain dollar amount, then you'll have to... And you're not in this case? That's right. That's right. Yes. Because the changes to the interior space are very minimal. It's really, you know, it's very, I mean, the changes are really about as small as you can get strictly to the interior. So you're well below the threshold. Are you going to be pulling a building permit? I believe I will have to pull a building permit because anytime you do work in commercial space, you have to pull a building permit. Okay, so the ADA review compliance will be reviewed by the building inspector at that particular point, I presume? Yes. Okay. What else, Daphne?
Alright, then we got from the health department, the health department conducted a review and had no comments. The building commissioner, the building commissioner said the applicant is seeking a special permit to operate the private school in Chestnut Street District. The applicant will be requesting special permits waiving strict adherence to parking requirement and parking plan. The applicant has provided square footage for the tenant spaces and based on 1,500 square feet for the first floor dental office, eight parking spaces would be required. The second floor are occupying 750, require three spaces. The basement level also at 1,500 feet, but using the standard for after-school programs for enrollment, fewer than 45, one space for every five students plus employees. Because the plan provides, provided does not show a handicap ban space, which should be marked on site with required sign. This is a Massachusetts AAB requirement. All students being picked up and dropped off shall be done in the parking lot and not in the street right of way. That's the building commissioner.
So John has joined us, but if you want to address just George, the handicap ban space and the pickup and drop-off regulations? Yes, so that the pickup and drop-off is no problem. And quite frankly, it would be difficult to pick up and drop off on Chestnut Street in that, in that area. Between with Roach Brothers, the Y, and McDonald's kind of all in the general vicinity, there's a lot of traffic that kind of is in that section anyway. So I don't think anybody would really... I would be really surprised if somebody thought to actually stop because you would have to stop right in the middle of traffic. So, so the, you know, from an operational perspective, the Code Wiz operation was always planning on having the drop-off and pickup entirely within the lot. And in fact, the loop that is that easement I referenced in the beginning actually is, you know, sort of convenient for that as well. Because they can come in, they can pull in the spaces right on the side there, do the drop-off, pickup, and then just loop right back out again.
I was down there today and it is pretty congested. How would the kids get into the building? Do they get dropped off and come around to the front?
Yes, so the entrance to the lower level is in the front and you have to, and there's a walkway that kind of slopes up on a gradual slope from the entry up to the, essentially the sidewalk there. So they get dropped off, most likely those parking spaces on the side of the building. And then they have to walk around the front and walk down the ramp down into the door to get in. John, just for your information, we read the planning board's comments. I think the board of health and the building inspector's comments. George, the only thing you didn't mention is this handicap ban or demarcating it on the plan. Right, we'll have to do that as a part of, as a part of the building permit process. I'm sure the building inspector will need us to do that. We can, we'll have to designate a space on the plan to show that it's a handicap space, basically. Back to you, John.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned that it's kind of undefined and a bunch of cars there where the kids would be getting dropped off. I mean, we can, we can say you can't do it on the street, but I'd like to understand a little better how you're going to run it so it'll be safe.
Sure. If I may just add one thing. So the plan is that, you know, we have five, five staff members on site at all times. So we will be having one person out of that standing outside on the, on the main level where at the times when, you know, we do have the switch in classes. So once this staff member is there, we can have parents park there and, you know, the staff member can guide the students through down to the lower level to the entrance of Code Wiz.
And how about pickup when the parents come to get them?
It's the same thing because the time period, the 10-minute gap is going to be the same for pickup and drop-offs, which is between the two classes. And so this one person can regulate both incoming and outgoing students.
Okay. I mean, is there any chance you could get a couple of parking spaces reserved for you? So, I mean, it looks a little chaotic to me, honestly, because there are cars parked there that might be backing out. And is there any chance you could get a couple of parking spaces blocked so that there's somewhere and not cars moving through there?
You mean, sorry, go ahead, George.
Well, I was just going to say, we could certainly speak with the landlord about that. But, but where, you know, where this is a tenant space in the building, it would be subject to Dr. Bejian, that Dr. Bejian who basically owns the building would be subject to his approval.
Yeah, because as I see it, the kids are going to get dropped off right where there might be active parking going in and out. I guess if there's a staff member there, that helps a whole lot.
Yeah. Yeah, and the staff member will help. And Dr. Bejian has been more than accommodative in all our interactions so far. So, I mean, I'm pretty sure that, you know, if there is an ask like that, that it shouldn't be a problem.
Dr. Bejian is an attendee.
Okay.
George, where does the back door to the building lead? Does that, that does not lead downstairs?
So there is, there is a back door that leads to the space, which won't be actually used as a, as an entrance exit. That will be only used for basically trash and service. So all the, all the kids will go through the front.
So I was wondering whether you could use that to have the kids come in and out and avoid the issue that John's speaking of. Yes, I I was wondering whether you could use that to have the kids come in and out and avoid the the issue that John's speaking of. Well, y- y- you you don't re- the parking lot is very awkward.
Yeah.
I was down there today. You do not want parents driving behind the building because it'll be a mess getting them out of there. You wanna have traffic flow so they go in the side and then turn right behind the Costa's Pizza.
Yeah, I'm thinking there's a lot of cars back there, yeah.
But but but, you know, they're they're gonna be getting dropped in in an active parking lot. But I I'm comforted by the fact that there is always gonna be a staff member out there to make sure someone doesn't come out and back their car out in the middle, but i- i- it could turn out to be awkward.
John, did you want um the applicant to go back to the landlord who's on the the call right now? And the lease does not provide it, it's uh all the tenants are in common for parking.
I don't know. You you know, I I I think the situation would be a little safer if the employees of CodeWiz were the ones parking along the side where you're doing the drop-off. So that you don't have, you know, random people um trying to get their cars in and out while parents are trying to do that loop to do a drop-off.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, go ahead. No, I think that's a fair suggestion, uh and that that's something that's definitely doable. We can add some sort of, you know, signage uh that CodeWiz parking can be at the back and uh for students and the the coaches can park on the side, so I think your concern that, you know, students should have safe um inflow and outflow is 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 valid, and the the good thing is that there is enough space uh both on the side and the back to accommodate for this.
Yeah, there there are enough spaces, it's just that it's gonna be very awkward.
Sure.
If someone decides to back out of one of those spaces while you're trying to do drop-offs and pickups.
No, that's fair, yeah.
Circulating through there.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely switch things around and make sure that, you know, student drop-off and pickup is happening through the back entrance.
Yeah, back entrance.
Yeah, I I mean, uh I I'm prepared to uh approve this with the understanding there will always be a staff member out there and that, you know, that that they will try to get those spaces along the side reserved for their staff. So that those cars are not in motion when people are trying to circulate through there.
Yeah, makes sense.
Other board members?
Well, I think that that you described the situation that it is a little tender, but the applicant uh is aware that she's also concerned about the health and safety of 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 the students, so I think that's an appropriate suggestion. To have a staff ou- outside helping with the parking, drop-off and pickup. Perhaps that might be a condition to this decision.
Uh I think you also want to just address the other comments uh before for the record, but I wanted to address um the free assignability issue we discussed many times. Uh this is a franchise. There is a franchise rider uh attached to the lease where they take assumption of the lease or have the right to do that in case there's a termination of the lease or default. And how you want that addressed or not, um I'm always of the belief we uh we permit people and operators rather than just simply uh something that's gonna run with the land. Um and uh I just wanted to raise that since I did see the franchise rider on that. But you also had the town engineer uh had no comment, just for the record, Debbie. Um and again, I think uh the health director had no comments, and I believe the fire department had no comments. I didn't see anything from the police department.
I think from the police.
Right, and I think I think the building inspector's only concerns were a handicap space and that there'd be no drop-off on the street, which we can certainly uh make a condition of the waiver. Is there anyone from the public who wants to be heard on that?
There are no hands raised among the partic- uh among the attendees.
But I do have a message from Dr. Bees here uh that looks like he's saying spaces on the side can be done. And he's not had any issue with his patients coming in and out with respect to traffic and and traffic flow.
Well, well, yeah, but I mean, a a couple of times a day there's gonna be a lot looping through there that wasn't happening before, but um hopefully they can work that out.
So do you wanna require something? Because I just heard that these uh landlord and tenant can work out an arrangement for two parking spaces or all coaches will park on the side. I think that's a it's a good uh recommendation. Um coupled with all students and drop-off we met by a coach.
Hmm, so John, you wanna try to make a motion on this?
Sure, I I I will try my best on the parking waivers, but I thought I saw a very good cheat sheet um for the parking waivers, um so.
Well, I think I I think we have to also grant a special permit for school.
And also for uh more than one non-residential uh use.
Oh, yeah, and we have to approve more than one non-residential.
Three, two, two, there's two there.
So so there are really three.
Special permit?
Items.
All right, so uh I'll make a motion um that uh the board approved a following special permits. One for a private school. A second special permit for one more than one residential building or use on a lot, which buildings or uses are not detrimental to each other and in compliance with the requirements of the bylaw. Third, to waive strict adherence to the requirements of uh section five point one two. Uh required parking, although I think we have met that requirement, you're asking.
I think I think I think they have the numbers, it's just the design waiver.
So I'm gonna eliminate that, George. Uh I think you have enough, I think. Uh so it's the parking plan and design requirements in five point one three. Uh subject to the following um uh conditions, uh the hours of operation. And I didn't have my note here, obviously. You you wanted to talk about the hours of operation or changing that, George?
So um so as I indicated, most days it's going to be between three and seven. But on the weeks of school vacation, it'll be nine to four, so, you know, I would I I always like to have a little time before because you wanna have the be able to have the staff get in early and then close up and so on, so. So if there's gonna be a limitation on hours, I would I would ask for eight thirty AM to say uh seven thirty PM, Monday through Friday. With the understanding that that's that it's not gonna operate, you know, within that full range, that the classes, most of the time the overwhelming majority is gonna be between three and seven, Monday through Friday.
W- why don't you take Saturdays also, case in your sight, then?
Sure.
Friendly amendment, uh is everybody in the board happy with those hours? Uh and and we have fifteen students and five staff?
Yes.
Okay, so subject to those hours and that uh capacity, um uh basically uh the special permit will be conditioned upon delineating one handicap space. Uh I I presume the landlord will do that, but somewhere uh that will be required, that there will be um coaches or staff pickup of every student who is picked up or dropped off uh at the school. Um there was one more that I'm missing.
Your nine assignment.
The parking for the staff be along the side.
That that the uh applicant uh and the landlord uh seek to amend the lease to allow for staff parking for this tenant on the side of the building, and that you and that's two spaces, you believe? Or do you need more for that?
Well, there there, I don't I don't know, I don't, you can look at the plan, but I think there are probably five spaces along there.
So so that's where the staff will be, the five parking spaces will be be delineated uh for um your staff parking.
That's right.
Okay, but there was one more that the building inspector asked for.
Handicap and no, oh, no park, no drop-off on the street.
On the street, right.
All right, no button drop-up, and um so let's just talk about the assignability and the franchise rider. Uh does anybody have a concern about restricting it to this applicant without coming back to the board for review and approval?
I think it's appropriate, John.
I don't have that problem, but if other board members do, we.
I I don't either, you you've limited what they're gonna be able to do in the space, and you're talking about somebody who operates the same business under these parameters. I don't know why we care who the operator is.
Well taken, so that's my motion, without that franchise rider uh being addressed.
Without making this personal to.
Correct, correct, there's no gonna be, no restriction on assignability to the franchise or obviously.
Okay, Howard, do you second that?
I second that motion, yes, thanks.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So so.
Great stuff you're doing. I have three granddaughters into robotics. But but none of them are in Needham, so they won't be your client.
They can participate remotely, John.
Congratulations and welcome to the town, and Daphne, I hope you took uh copious notes and you have the video from that sort of inarticulate motion.
I got it.
Thank you very much, anyone.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Um case number three is thirteen forty-six South Street. Scallywags LLC applicant has applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections five point one point one point five, five point one point two, five point one point three and other applicable sections of the bylaw to waive strict adherence to parking and parking design requirements. The special permit is associated with a planned increase in enrollment over current levels at the Scallywags uh childcare facility. The property is located at thirteen forty-six South Street in the Rural Residence Conservation District and the Neighborhood Business District. Um who is this yours also, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
You have a have a busy night.
I do indeed.
I hope you don't fall asleep, it's the middle of the night for you.
Well, it it is, but uh you know, I I planned accordingly and took a nice lengthy nap this afternoon, so. That 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 and a cup of coffee uh should be all right.
Must have been a siesta.
Yes, all right, so this is um actually a pretty straightforward, uh relatively simple application. It's for the property at thirteen forty-six South Street, which uh as indicated is majority in the Neighborhood Business District in that kind of funky unusual business district uh down at the intersection of uh of uh South Street and Charles River. And it is sort of old historic district, and this property, the front on a roughly eighty percent is in the Neighborhood Business District, and then the the very back sort of tail end uh of the yard is in the Rural Residential District. So the property has eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six square feet of land with seventy-eight, uh almost seventy-eight and a half feet of frontage on South Street. Uh it's a one, has a one-story building with a detached garage and parking areas in front of the garage and in front of the building. The building was built in nineteen sixty-five uh and was used for many years uh since the early two thousands by Bradford Goldens and his uh business consulting business known as the Goldens Group. And I think um, Mr. Chairman, you might, I can't remember for sure, but you might have been on the board when when uh he went in and he got approval to operate his business, because back then you couldn't have a general office in the Neighborhood Business District, so he had to get a uh a swa- uh extension of a prior non-conforming use in order to go in and operate there, and that was back in uh April of two thousand and one that that was approved. So he did all, he occupied the buildings, as I said, used it for many years. Uh and then beginning this past January, Scallywags, which is a childcare operation, took over and began using it. Now, Scallywags was established by Lorraine Cronin, who is uh on here along with her husband Dennis. And uh she started Scallywags in Wellesley in two thousand and eighteen. And I said, opened the Needham location this past January. It's a childcare facility generally for kids uh ages zero to three years old. The operation has been running with an enrollment of twenty-five uh children with a maximum of six staff. And that is all sort of within the byright provisions, so the use itself is a, it's a use that's not only allowed under the Needham zoning bylaw, but it's also allowed, that's a exempt Dover Amendment use under section three of chapter forty A, so the use itself is fully allowed uh by right without any any extra zoning relief required. Uh however, uh we're here this evening because because we now need parking relief because Scallywags wants to expand. So as I said, they have been operating with twenty-five children and six staff. They now want to expand to thirty-two children. Uh and that they would need additional staff for that, that would bring up the staff to eight staff. So it's an increase of seven children and an increase of two staff. Right now, when you run the numbers for the twenty-five children with the six staff, eleven parking spaces are required. And there are eleven spaces on site. There are five spaces along the front of the building. There's two spaces in the detached garage, and then there's another four spaces, sort of tandem spaces in front of the detached garage for the total of eleven. There is technically uh room for an additional two tandem spaces along the lines, you know, in front of the garage, so it will end up being three surface or outside tandem spaces and then two more in the garage. Uh because the way this is, the way this is actually developed and laid out, the road for South Street is is several feet away from the property, so there is a large area that is not a part of the road uh but is basically becomes a part of almost the parking layout. And you can see that on the plan on one of the sheets from the architect set that was submitted, and uh if you want, I can put it up as well, but I think it's pretty straightforward from the plans that that you were provided. So when you add those two spaces in, obviously you come up to a total of thirteen spaces available on site, but that is still less than the uh current than the fifteen spaces that will be required based on the expanded enrollment. So under the expanded enrollment, uh with the thirty-two children, it is uh you take the total enrollment divided by five, so in this case, thirty-two divided by five is six point four. You have to round that up to seven, a- and then it's one space for each staff, so with the expanded staff of eight, that's eight spaces for the staff, so seven plus eight is fifteen spaces required. And so thirteen being less than the uh fifteen, we need a a waiver from the number of spaces. In addition, the parking, which has been there uh since before the early eighties when the design requirements were adopted, is non-compliant with respect to virtually all of the design guidelines, so there's also a waiver necessary for the parking design standards. So the five drop-off spaces in front of the of the five spaces in front of the building, which have been used for drop-off and pickup, will continue to be used as such. Uh the increase by in the enrollment from twenty-five to thirty-two children technically requires one point four additional spaces, so really don't expect that to have any material impact on the existing operation with respect to the drop-off and pickup. Really, the additional spaces that are required sort of in practice or in reality are the spaces for the staff, and as I indicated, there is room to squeeze in two more uh spaces for them. And admittedly, those spaces stretch into the technical right-of-way, but they don't actually go into the street. So as a result, I think this is uh won't won't make any impact uh beyond the existing use and is an expansion that that fits, works and makes sense.
Good, what are the hours of operation, please?
Uh actually, uh Lorraine, do you wanna take that one?
Sure, um we operate seven thirty to three thirty, Monday through Friday.
Could could you, I mean, I was up there today and it's a very congested spot. Could you explain how the, I mean, I saw a parent picking up today and pulled into one of those spaces and got her child and came out. It, can you explain how the pickup and drop-off works? Is it the the five spaces in front are kept open?
Yeah, um so it's 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 somewhat of a staggered drop-off, so not everybody comes at the same time. Uh we drop off in the morning anytime between seven thirty and eight thirty and then pick up in the afternoon. Some parents arrive like two thirty, uh and the last person arrives at three thirty. Um there are some times um the parents will come in, well, every day the parents will come in, drop the kids off personally because most of the kids are so young. There's certain times of the day where there's extra parking because we don't have all the staff. There's certain times of the day where there's extra parking because we don't have all the staff. There because um, some of my staff don't, I don't have cars. So they use the parking spots that are in front of the garage for um, the pickup and drop-off. That's usually a minute to two minutes tops. For each pickup and drop-off.
And it's worked so far?
Yeah, it's, I mean, I think it's working really well. Um, I'm usually at the door to greet the parents with the child and they come and go pretty quickly. Um. And it it seems to be working seamlessly.
So to any of the board members, I'm trying, I'm trying to line up our comments, maybe I'll go through those. Uh, the 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 planning board had no comment. The uh. The fire department and police department had no comment. Or no concerns at least. The uh, health department had. A concern over the septic system. Um. And I actually can't find the building inspectors. Do you have that, Daphne?
Um, it's the same, uh, it's the same as for all of them and um. He had no, he had, wait, wait. The applicant would. Like to see where everything increases or not. I do not oppose the increase, but I would like a condition that the persons accessing the building, he picked up and dropped off. On the site and not on the street right away.
Well, yeah, that. Yes, okay, you're right.
It's impossible, it's impossible.
Do you, do you wanna try to address the septic? Concerns of the health department?
Sure, it's uh, it's actually um, it it's a pretty straightforward, it's. It's on a septic system and when septic systems are designed and approved. They're designed and approved usually for a certain capacity. So here there's, there's a change in the use and the the board of health, I mean, the way I read it, the board of health is basically saying, they wanna. Sort of do a review and make sure that the capacity of the system is still sufficient to support the additional students and staff. And they, uh, uh, Lorraine had to go through this when she first opened up with the board of health and basically had the. The process with them to determine that the system was sufficient to handle the use. With the twenty-five students and the six staff, so this is basically just a further, you know, review of that to ensure that the additional. People aren't gonna overburden the system.
Is there something that can be done if it's determined that they need more capacity?
Well, presumably, I mean, septic systems can be uh added on to, can be rebuilt, replaced, you know, there's a, there's a number of different things. Uh, I do, the expectation is that that won't be a problem, that the system is adequate to handle it, but uh, but we have to go. Go through the process with the board of health to, you know, give them what they need to see, to show that.
Well, the 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 health department says we are never notified of the conversion. When they opened up and there's something about there's also a residence on the same septic system?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure what that is, because actually there is. There is, uh, when when Scallywags first pulled the building permit. There's the whole thing that they submitted documents to the board of health and, I mean, I've seen the paper trail of that, so they they. Certainly, board of health was notified and and actually had, they were submitted a a. Some information with respect to the system design and the system that's there. And there is no residential, it's just, just the the childcare operation.
Yeah, I didn't see a residence.
Yeah. So I'm, I wasn't sure if they were, if they're getting it confused or with another location or.
Well, I. You know, I. I I guess, I I think it would probably be appropriate for us to just say that. You know, you have to have the septic system approved by the health department.
Yes.
Then I think that makes sense. I see nods from the other board members.
Absolutely makes sense, yes.
I guess I. It it strikes me that this could be awkward if you don't have a lot of staggering in the. Uh, pickups and drop-offs, but. The good thing is it's at least not on a busi- i- i- it's a less busy part of Needham. Uh, there, um.
So should we be concerned?
Other board members have, well, first of all, is there anyone from the public here on this, definitely?
There is one hand raised. I'm gonna go ahead and promote that person. At to a panelist, a Ron Anderson. I promoted Ron.
See his name.
Needs to unmute.
Ron, please unmute, then identify your address. Ron, oh, there you go.
Thank you. Um, I'm Ron Anderson. I'm at thirteen sixty South Street, the direct closest to butter. Um, Scallywags and um. Being as we're so close, uh, we have no issues whatsoever. Uh, with with them, we've seen the the level of activity. Uh, the courtesy of the parents coming and going, the courtesy of the staff. And um. We haven't seen any issues. Uh, my wife is a teacher at the Carter School in Needham Heights. And she's very in tune with any safety issues for for kids and families and cars. And she has no issues. Um, they. In the short time they've been here, they've been fantastic neighbors. Uh, we couldn't ask for, for better neighbors. Um, so. We have no objection to it whatsoever. Um, there, uh, we couldn't ask for better.
Thank you.
We have no concerns about the traffic pattern.
Do you, do you wanna say something more?
Uh, we have no concerns about the traffic or the level of activity. Uh, they're, they're doing a great job moving people in and out, so.
Good, it's good to hear.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Daphne?
No, there are no more hands raised.
Okay. So is anyone on the board uh have concerns or questions?
Uh, I think it's a, I think it's a nice operation and I think the parking is, was good to hear from the the neighbor, Mr. Anderson. Question, this decision, should we be concerned about hours of operation? They're currently at seven thirty to three thirty, Monday through Friday.
You know, where we're not. I mean, I'm not sure that that has an impact really on the parking. I mean, we're, we're not issuing a special permit here. Because this is a use that's allowed of right and under the Dover Amendment. Um. I mean, I mean, we're, we're really just issuing a parking waiver as to number and design. Um. And and I guess, I I I'm not sure that the hours of operation are connected. With those issues, I I mean, how do other board members see?
I think that's right, John. Uh, unlike the previous decision when there was surrounded by a lot of other uh, the the school, the restaurants and so on. This appears to be a somewhat isolated location with 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 not a lot of traffic, so I certainly, I I I think it's less concerned. About the hours of operation.
My feeling is the focus should be on the uh pickup and the drop-off. And obviously, we're going to uh address the capacity, that's the point of this. And the number of teachers and and students at any time, so uh hours of operation, um. Uh, there there's a residential area, so I think there's some element that there should be some restrictions on that. Uh, I think they can be pretty broad. I don't, if they only have it Monday through Friday, I have no problem expanding that to Saturday to give them the flexibility. They have great hours. Um, and so I, you know, I, if 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 we have the regulatory approval right to do so, I think some restrictions should be in there. Um, but my focus really is on um, the logistics of how they uh. Address the children being dropped off. That's, that's the only thing.
Yeah, I I I think we need to put in a requirement that there'll be some number of spaces. In front of the building kept open for pickup and drop-off.
Which they do now. They have all five for pickup and drop-off, so.
And 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 can, can we do that, so, can? Will it work if we put a condition that there have to be five spaces in front? Available for pickup and drop-off and can the staff park in the remaining spaces?
I believe, yeah, I believe that'll work and I see Dennis and Lorraine shaking their heads, yes, so.
Okay. Alright, so you you wanna make this motion, John? You're.
No, I think this is a Howard one. I bumbled the last one.
No, you did a good job, but she'll be happy to 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 uh put forth a motion. On behalf of the applicant for the special permit. Under sections five, one, one, five, five, one, two and five, one, three. Regarding the waiver of of uh, number of parking spaces and parking design. Uh, for this childcare facility. Uh, located at thirteen forty-six South Street. In the rural residence conservation district and also the neighborhood business district. With uh caveats regarding the pickup and drop-off. That there'd be five spaces designated in in the front of the building onsite. And that pickup and drop-off only be onsite and not in the private way that it butts the road. Uh, and then finally, that the applicant obtain approval for septic from the health department. That the the system is properly designed. And then finally, the the issue of of numbers of students and staff. That the the number of students not exceed thirty-two at any one time. And that the staff not exceed eight at any one time.
You second that, John?
Yeah, I thought it was a fantastic motion, uh, really well done, Howard. I'll second.
You had a lot of practice. Alright, thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye, congratulations.
Thank you.
Doing your good work.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.
Alright, case number four is one thirty-two dash one thirty-four Hillside Avenue. East Rock Development LLC applicant has applied to the Board of Appeals. For variance under sections three point two point one, seven point five point three. Any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow the planned substitution and further relief to a ZBA variance. Um, the lot is at the rear of one thirty-six Hillside Avenue. Um, oh, I guess that's, I'm sorry, that's the title. ZBA variance for a lot. At the rear of one thirty-six Hillside Avenue, December nineteen nineteen seventy-two. Authorizing the use of the premises for two-family purposes. Any and all other relief necessary to permit the demolition of the existing two-family dwelling and to replace it with a new two-family. Uh, the property is located at one thirty-two dash one thirty-four Hillside Avenue in the single residence P District. Mr. Janta, you have a busy night.
That's right, indeed I do. Indeed I do. Alright, so um, uh, as indicated, this is essentially an application to demolish and reconstruct. An existing two-family that's in a single-family zone. But unlike uh, the majority of these cases that come before the board as special permits. This one actually is, was originally authorized by a variance, so, which I'll get to in a moment. So the the property is shown as parcel sixty-eight on assessors map ninety-five. It has seventeen thousand three hundred and ninety-nine square feet of area with twenty feet of frontage on Hillside Avenue. The, it is currently occupied by an existing two-family structure, uh, that's a two-story building that was built in or around nineteen seventy-three. Uh, that two-family contains approximately two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight square feet of finished interior space. With ten rooms being four bedrooms and two full baths. Uh, as I mentioned and as indicated at the reading of the notice, uh, the this, the existing two-family building, the two-family use. Was authorized by a variance dated December nineteenth nineteen seventy-two. That was issued to Francis B Eaton to quote, construct a two-family dwelling on lot at the rear of one thirty-six Hillside Avenue. Uh, the decision and the file appear, do not appear to reference or include any specific plans. Other than the plan of the lot. So it is a variance that was a general use variance for two-family purposes and wasn't specific to any spec- any. Design, any designated house or any specific uh, structure. So the house was built in ten seventeen seventy-two, it's still there today, been used for two-family purposes, and my clients now want to knock it down and essentially rebuild it. Uh, for the same two-family purposes as was authorized by the variance in nineteen seventy-two. This is not the first such application to come before the board, uh, in, in fact, this is now gonna be the fourth one. The very first one was for seventy dash seventy-two Marshall Street back in two thousand and eight. And there was one for one fourteen Hillside Avenue in two thousand and sixteen. And again, one for four sixty central, uh, just last year in two thousand and twenty twenty-one. Uh, and even though this technically doesn't fall within the provisions of one point four. Uh, point seven of the bylaw with respect to reconstruction of non-lawful persisting, non-conforming two families in a single-family zone. Nevertheless. This design and this proposal meets all of the dimensional and density requirements of that section. As well as all of the dimensional and density requirements of section four of the bylaw. That apply generally to all uh residential construction in the town. So the proposed re- replacement or reconstructed two-family will meet all the. You know, applicable side yard setback, lot coverage, um, floor ratio, all those requirements completely. Uh, therefore, really, the issue for the board is, as the board has articulated, is a determination as to whether or not. Uh, this is within the four corners of the original variance and whether or not is therefore provable as a essentially a substitution under the original variance.
Alright, so it's a very strange location, but.
It it is, and I think that probably hearkens back to back in the day, this little area. Uh, had quite a few multifamily. It's also immediately adjacent to the Hillside Avenue Business District. So you have, you know, there was, the board had granted a variance several years ago for the three-family on the corner of Hillside and Honeywell. There's the apartment building right next to that, which has, uh, I don't know, more than twenty units in it. There's the eight-unit condominium development in three buildings right sort of next door to this. There's the new. Eight-unit apartment building behind this. Uh, that that was approved. You've got two families basically all throughout this area generally, and the general residence district is literally right around the corner. So I think back in the day, this was, this was a more dense area and was developed as such, so it's kind of, it is kind of a funky. You know, as 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 one former planning board member would say, it's a house behind a house. Uh, but.
Uh, weren't two families once allowed in this area?
Not in this area. So so there was a good part of the town that it was. Uh, up until nineteen fifty-eight, but this was not in that, this was not included in that area. This is just that, just outside it. I mean, it's not too far away, but. This is just as a.
So, um. The the fire department. Has no concern, um. Did we have a comment from the police department, Daphne? Too much paper here.
Oh, too much paper. We're so used to. Uh, no, there was none from.
No comment from the police.
Only the fire department.
Right, the engineering department uh wants some calculations. About uh soil erosion control, but says that can be dealt with as part of the building permit process. The health department, um. Ju- just notes that uh, you have to follow demolition procedures and. Pay attention to pest control. Um, I've lost my paper here, uh, the, I think, I think, uh. Daphne, do you have the planning board comment and the building department comment?
Okay, the planning board has no comments.
That's what I thought.
And the building commissioner for. Um. He had no issues with the reconstruction.
Okay. Alright, do we have anyone from the public here who wants to be heard on this?
We have one hand raised from a shop ponca, and I'm going to go ahead and promote him as a panelist. And as we're waiting for you, please, um. Let us know what your address is.
Can you all see me and can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay, good.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I leave next, uh my property is a one thirty Hillside next door. And uh this uh uh Ms Collins, she sent me a package of all the plant, the the two-family. Uh the structures and plants and every uh all the details. That just couple of, I have one comment and one suggestion. The one comment is somewhat unusual. Um we were, the neighbors were somewhat displeased when. Mister uh Robert Cortez, when this property, when he bought it, this property a few months ago. And many mature trees, nine or ten mature trees were removed. So that wasn't not some, uh we were not quite happy about it, that is my comment. Um secondly, now this two-family home. Now, which comes kind of close to my uh my house, one thirty Hillside. And these are tall houses built to the maximum height. And coming close to my property line, of course, they are built to the pro- whatever the setback requirement. So I have one very, you know, modest request. That 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 plan does show. That please, if maybe if I can show, the this plan shows eight or nine trees. Pla- uh planted between uh one thirty Hillside. And this new two-family home. So the only, my modest request is that this tree line. Should go all the way to the end of the property. So that will give kind of similar isolation that what I have now. Instead of just putting nine or ten trees, I suggest that keep these trees. Will extend it all the way to the to the end of the properties. And when these new trees are planted, it will be very desirable. In fact, I would really would like to see these new trees are bought at least twelve to fifteen feet tall. So it will give you the necessary separation from one thirty Hillside. With this very tall two-family houses. So that's all I have, just a aside comment about the 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 trees were removed, so somewhere. My neighbors were somewhat displaced, that's and secondly, again, just a small request that. The tree line should extend all the way to the property line and that new trees which are bought. Should be at least twelve to fifteen feet tall. Other otherwise, I have no issue with this and um that that's all I have.
Mister Jenta, can we accommodate that request?
I uh I will look to Mister Curatola, but my initial thought is. That it shouldn't be a big problem to extend it all the way to the back property line. Uh however, I think there might be a significant difference going to a twelve to fifteen foot tree versus the. Six to seven foot, that's that's proposed now.
You know, I think the this is, the, I mean, the the very mature trees were removed already, you know, nine or ten very mature trees were removed. So this is something, you know, to compensate for, you know. The the tall two-family home and the loss of this existing trees. So again, this is a very modest request, again, I will welcome this project. Again, uh it will not be, hope the new owner would accommodate my modest request.
Rob, do you wanna comment at all?
Um so the trees that we uh usually plant along uh property lines, they do grow very fast. Um so I I think if we did plant an eight-foot tree, I I think you'd be happy that, I I think in a year or two would be getting up, you know. Up to that height. It's also to availability right now, too, that's the other thing, too, I'd hate to promise on a certain height. Uh right now, the lower uh trees at at the six or eight are a lot more readily available. You start getting up to the twelve and fifteen, I I can't promise that they'll be available.
I I think maybe let let's maybe just, you know, instead of twelve or fifteen, maybe, maybe maybe ten feet will be okay also, you know? Because, yeah, yeah.
Uh uh again, I I I'd hate to promise, but I mean, I can make my best, I mean, we can definitely, you know, say the sixty-eight and and. You have my word, I'll try my best to get you to the eight feet and, I mean, the ten feet, and for some reason, if we can't, we can also do a raised bed. That would then elevate the tree, so we could do a raised bed along the property line that would elevate the tree to that height.
No, I think, no, that I don't thi- I don't think we need to worry about uh uh raising the bed of the tree, just. You know, the ground level, whatever the elevation, I'm okay with it, just uh again, uh just. All, I mean, we trust you that, you know, you will go, you will try your best to go with a ten-foot tree, at least ten-foot trees, you know? All the to the end, all the to the end of the property.
Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely go to the end of the property and and like I said, we'll try our best to get you that that height.
And 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 is this on the left side as you look at the house?
Yes, it is.
Right, yes.
Right. And the you'll try to do the whole tree line.
Yeah, so.
The whole property line with tree.
So um that's a good question, thanks for asking that, what I would suggest is to do the trees. From where the surveyor drew the first one, which is closest to Hillside. I don't think we should go all the way to Hillside because um there's no structure there, but also it will block um. Views from people pulling out either our drive or even next door. But what I would propose is we could go, uh we can fill in the whole back, so to speak, where it goes to the property line in the back.
Right.
But I, where the first tree is drawn, you can see it's away from the structure. But if we go the the additional forty feet towards the street, I'm just worried we're gonna be blocking some uh. Views out to Hillside for people backing out or.
There's all, there's all mature trees there now, Rob, they're very, very large trees that are there that, there's no way you can put additional trees on that strip.
Oh, right, exactly, right, yeah, cuz it's like, that's right near that telephone pole also.
The telephone pole, there's, it's all wooded throughout there with lilacs and big trees are ready.
But correct, I I, but I believe we could definitely add the trees from that last one you drew to the back property line, correct?
Hundred percent, we'll add five more trees extended to the back, six to eight footers are definite. With a potential two-three foot mu- landscape mound, yep.
Alright, Mister Shaw, is it, that's what you asked for anyhow, isn't it, just to extend from where they drew them to the rear line?
With the rear line, I think we, I agree with you, there may not be much room in the front, the way these properties are.
No.
But again, um extending all there to the back and having the as lo- long trees as possible. I mean, as reasonably possible.
Yeah, I I can tell you from personal experience, my neighbor planted eight-foot trees and the next thing I knew, they were twenty feet. And my lawn is dead, but.
Yeah, you have to have, have to trim them, are we talking? We're talking about trees, are we talking about arborvitae bushes that's on the plan now?
Yep, they'll be green giant species.
Yep.
Unbelievably, I have to top mine every couple of years.
If you want screening, those are the ones to use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I think just, uh are we planning to have bushes or the trees, and we are talking with the trees, isn't it, yeah?
The trees.
Right, right.
Tree, yeah, it's called a green giant.
I see, okay. And I assume that during the construction, there'll be enough enough precautions will be taken, so. Uh the dust or any debris and all would not come on my, on one thirty.
Yeah, yeah, it's part of the demo process that we uh, we hire the fire department that comes out and waters down the property. Um so a lot of precautions are taken.
Alright, um so are there any further questions from the board? I mean, I I, we we have seen this before and. This, this is a use variance with no specification of what is to be built. So I'm personally okay with allowing a substitution of a. Of a new property uh is uh so long as it's in compliance with. One point seven point four, which we would um allow if this were. A technically non-conforming as opposed to pursuant to a variance. But uh I invite the other board members to join in.
Uh I just wanna add that this, the standard appears to be that the the new construction is less detrimental to the neighborhood. Than the existing uh two-family, uh and I I I believe that to be the case. Ba- based on what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, it strikes me that it's gonna be an improvement to the neighborhood because it's a nice new expensive house.
Two houses.
John or Peter?
That would just may finish, so one last thing, so curiously enough, in the in the zoning variance determination by the board some years ago. They didn't seem to focus on the standard pr- uh re- requirements regarding um. Uh uh the the uniqueness of the land or on the hardship. And I'm not sure that's even in front of us, but it's sort of a point of interest to John to to get to get comment on that.
It was a different standard.
Yeah, before nineteen, before nineteen eighty, a variance was whatever the board. Thought was a hardship.
Yep, money, economics, uh they don't like the look, uh variances are um candy, they just gave them out. Um much different, that's why the regulations and the case law, you know, changed it. Uh I don't have any problems, I I it looks like an improvement, your Director Butter is supportive of that, you've accommodated what. He's looking for, um and so uh I think it's a, it's a, it's a good improvement and. We've seen your work before, you do good work, and I'm sure you'll do that, it's a kind of a strange area with. What what's going on there, but um everything that's uh done well is uh generally an improvement to something that's uh needs to be changed. And so I'm supportive of it.
Mr. Friedenberg, you have?
Yep, uh I I have nothing to add, I agree.
Alright, someone wanna make a, John or Howard, make a motion, please?
I give a shot, John? Who we lost him?
You're muted, John.
Alright, the absence of silence from John. Okay, so move that the applicant's request for a variance under sections three point two one and seven five. Well, that really, really not seven five three, uh the the under variance of the three two one uh to allow a planned substitution. To to uh to build a two-family uh residence to substitute what's currently there. Uh on a property located one thirty-two, one thirty-four Hillside Avenue in the Single Residence District. Uh with the caveat that the plan that's been presented to be uh modified to include. Five mature arborvitae's being at least six to eight feet in height. Along with a uh raised bed uh in the area extending. Uh on the plan, on on the left side of the plan, appears to be the north side, all the way to the rear of the lot.
Alright, I I I I have some problems with um. This uh uh in terms of the form of motion, we're not, we're not moving to grant a new variance.
Correct.
And I I I actually don't think we're moving to grant a planned substitution cuz there was no old plan.
Correct.
But I I think what we're doing, as we have in the past, is making a finding that this would be consistent with the existent, existing variance.
And I think we're authorizing uh the uh demolition and the construction of the new. Ho- cotton, two home, two family as well, so I agree this, that we don't have a plan to substitute. We do, but we don't have a plan originally, someone obviously built a two-family. Uh so it's weird, I I haven't looked at the other three that we've done. Of of a similar nature and what the findings, but I do recall it was a finding of conformity. And compliance with uh one seven uh four.
Yeah, I I I mean, I think what we did, at least the last one that I remember, is that um. We, I I think in a titled an interpretation of a variance. And and you what we said was that, you know, the existing variance authorized the use. And um there was no restriction on what the structure should be, so that. We would find building this new structure consistent with the existing variance.
I think that's a fine motion.
Can I make the motion or what, Howard?
No, no, I I I appreciate the 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 clarification, so curiously enough, that what was. Requested by the applicant is something different than what we're talking about now.
Correct, it's it's.
Right, right, that happens often.
But there seems to be some general uh uh unanimity in that concept. Uh and so I was really reviewing what was, what was presented to the public, but, no, I agree with what you're saying, John, that the. Uh that there has been a use grant, use variance grant for a two-family home. Uh that these plans that have been presented are acceptable and certainly conform to all the. The building uh requirements and zoning setback requirements um. And so that the motion then would be to um uh to to uh. To maintain the use, to permit the demolition of the two-family, to allow a re- uh 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 construction of a two-new family pursuant to these plans. I'm not sure if I said that uh appropriately for you, John.
Right, and that that we find that consistent with the existing variance.
And that the use is consistent and that the plant plan a- as presented is consistent. Again, along with the 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 caveat about the arbor, five arbor, mature arborvitae's. Extending to the rear of the lot, I believe on the left side or the north side, uh along with a raised bed.
Um just, uh it was a six to eight foot with best efforts to get to the ten foot, and I'm not so sure the butter wanted the raised bed. Uh I've heard that twice, I I I, does does the butter want the raised bed, cuz I thought you said?
Um no, I don't think so, but I think what we want, what I expected, at least eight foot, not six to eight foot. But at least eight foot, eight foot tall.
Can we agree to find eight foot at least? Yes, okay, so eight foot, best effort to get ten. No raised bed, the entire length of that uh property line.
From where they start in the plan to the rear of the property.
Yeah, exactly.
To the back of the property, to the end of the back of the property.
Yes.
Alright, so you're seconding that, John?
I'll second that collaborative motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Free vacation, George.
Yeah.
Hi, George.
Thank you on listening, my.
Bathroom break before we head to the last one?
Absolutely, sir, it's our pleasure.
Alright, so case number five is uh fifteen forty-five Central Avenue. Uh review of the construction and operations of the paddle court facility. Uh at the Needham Pool and Rocket Club, uh per the ZBA special permit dated July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Properties located at fifteen forty-five Central Avenue in the Single Residence A District. Uh we had Mister, I see, yes, Mister Nektow's been advanced and welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um not knowing exactly what the format was tonight, um I did send a a memo in. Um sort of covering some of the major points, I thought I'd just walk through the the memo and. And take any questions you have, I also want to acknowledge that there's uh some of our board members are um are in the, in the waiting room as well. Some board members from um Pool and Rocket, our landlord. Um and and I thank all of them for joining, uh so we um started construction of our facility. In uh February of uh of uh two thousand twenty-one. Um we ran a little bit of weather conditions early, starting a project in February, but we were able to wrap it up. Uh by uh October first, substantially complete by October first. Um we had some uh problems with uh Eversource, they were really the uh the last uh. Piece that we needed to uh fill in and uh we got them done uh right around that time as well. Um I think you recall that we uh, we constructed three paddle tennis courts and a six hundred square foot clubhouse. And I did include some photos, uh some aerial photos, um I have many more if you'd like to see more views of of the facility. Um so the construction went as planned. So the construction went as planned and we were able to open the doors on October one. We have a hundred and sixty members. The club is open seven days a week from eight AM to ten PM. The lights are really used. The court lights are really used from dusk to closing. We have some safety lights along the walkway and on the peaks of the building. Those go off at ten thirty PM and then we have parking lot safety lights that are gone on from dusk to dawn. We met all the conditions in the in the permit. There were many and we we met them all. And really, what I wanted to talk about is what we have planned for the future. We have had a really, really great first season. We the courts are always full. Everybody's enjoying being outside in the winter. And we have a fairly substantial waitlist. And sometime in the next year or so, maybe two years, we'd like to discuss adding a fourth court. We don't have the location plans, any any of that work done. But that is really one of the major projects that we will take on the next couple of years. We we first have to work with our landlord, Needham Pool and Racket on all the appropriate approvals. Situate the court in a in a in a strategic place for both organizations. And then, of course, we'll be back to see you to get our special permit changed, allowing for a fourth court. And that's sort of one of the biggest projects that we have in our near future. We also want to upgrade the hut. The clubhouse, as you recall, we we put a a compostable toilet in the facility. I think we want to upgrade the facility and have a more traditional bathroom. That's going to take a little bit of work in terms of design. And whether we do run water up to the hut or or well and what kind of septic. And again, all this is just in the very, very beginning stages. And we really hope to have the design done by October first of of twenty two. So another big project. And then the last item in the future is we'd really like to begin discussions with you about extending our closing time from ten to eleven, so we can get an extra hour of play each night. And that would give us, again, more playing time for the members. And also take some pressure off our league nights when we try to fit all of our all of our matches in under the ten PM closing time. So that's where we are. It was really a very, very successful first year. Could be happier the way things came out. You you saw the few photos I sent. It really is quite a beautiful facility. It fits beautifully on the site. And and that's sort of where I was going to end my my formal presentation. I'm happy to answer any any questions.
Well, I think, you know, the principal purpose of this was to see if the neighbors' fears came to fruition and how the neighbors feel about this and whether we might need to require further screening or something else. So I think probably what we ought to do is is hear from the neighbors to see how they've reacted to this. I I I understand it's gone very well from your point of view. I I I guess I would also say that if you want to make a request to increase the hours, I think you really ought to do that by an application for an amendment to the special permit so that we can give notice of that request to the neighbors and that they have an opportunity to comment on it, just like that would be the process if you seek to expand. But but, you know, why don't we bring in any of the neighbors and let's hear what their concerns are and what their reactions have been to the operations?
Okay, I'm going to promote John McCarthy. Yes, his hand raised. All right, Mr. McCarthy.
Hello, how is everyone? All right, I I want to first start off by saying that the I I'm going to agree that the 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 courts have been really nice. It's actually fun looking across my yard and seeing seeing the residents having fun out on the on the courts. A fourth court. It concerns me, but I'm not completely opposed to it. What I am completely opposed to is going later. I think the ten o'clock closing time works for the neighbors. I I think it should be more than late enough for the members. And again, my concern is safety. The courts close at ten. People tend to hang around for a little while after the courts close. There is alcohol over there. The later it goes, you know, I I have a I I have a child over here fifteen oh nine Central Ave. The light's staying on for another hour, especially during the school year. That that concerns me. I'd I'd like to see that stay as is. I am happy to hear that the expansion is going to include a septic system. We were told that the composting toilet was going to be put in place and there were going to be no porta potties. Porta potties came when the club opened. Unfortunately, I I thought they were temporary. They were not. They stayed there through the summer. I can smell the porta potties from my house. I'm concerned in the wintertime when the sewage freezes, they can't be properly serviced and and they can't be, you know, properly drained. So, you know, it it is good to hear that, you know, their expansion is going to involve a septic system. You know, so I'd be I'd be interested to hear, you know, what that involves. You know, if they're going to put a new septic system in or if they're going to try to tie into the existing septic system that I believe dates back to nineteen sixty two with the Pool and Racket Club. And I'm I'm very concerned because of the age of that system. You know, it it just appears that you know, that system can barely handle the Pool and Racket Club members. And I am downhill, as is the wetlands from that septic system. So any failures or overloading that system. You know, it results in sewage going into the wetlands right beside my house. So, you know, I definitely don't want to see you know, a lot of additional members on the paddle tennis club using the existing septic system. I'd like to see a, you know, a completely new septic system installed. But I I guess, you know, in short, I really like having the paddle paddle tennis club next to me. The one thing I am upset about is they said they were going to put a composting toilet in as a condition to get the paddle tennis club approved. And they told the board and they told the neighbors there were not going to be porta potties. And there are porta potties up there. And, you know, I just nobody likes, just, I guess, I don't want to say being lied to. And maybe there's a reason why the porta potties are there, but we were, we were clearly told that the porta potties would not be there. And they are. So anyway, those are those are my concerns. I really would like to see the ten o'clock closing time, you know, continue. And I really would like to see an adequate new septic system installed for the, you know, for the for the clubhouse or the warming hut. And that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Nectow, you want to explain what's going to happen with the septic system? If you know.
I don't. We we haven't really got that far. I I I don't know enough about the Pool and Racket septic system to tell you if we could tie in or not. So I I just I have no comment about it.
But, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we haven't even met with an engineer yet. We're very, very, very early, early stages.
What what about the porta potties? Are they going to go?
The porta potties are going to go. We 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 did leave them in place. And we did put the composting toilet toilet in. We did have a little bit of trouble with it. So we kept the porta potties just to have a place for the members to to use while the while the compostable toilet wasn't functioning as it should have. So we it's really the key driver and why we want to to upgrade the bathroom to provide a better facility for our members.
All right, do we have some other neighbors, Daphne?
We have another Laura, and I'm going to promote her as a panelist. While you're being promoted, Laura, please give us your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Laura De Mayo, and I'm at two thirty seven Mark Tree Road. And I'm also the president of the Needham Pool and Racket Club this year. And John, I wanted to address the the issue of the septic system as to the best of my knowledge. We do. I think the septic system has been upgraded since nineteen sixty two. I can't give you the exact year, but we do service it every single year. And obviously we would want to replace it before it it ever failed. But it's not to my knowledge right now that that is that we are close to that being done, but we do have it serviced every year. And as for the porta potties, as the Pool and Racket Club, we're interested in keeping them there for our we we run all of our youth programs on courts nine through twelve. And for many, many years, we've wanted to put porta potties there. And we were afraid of the smells, but as a member of the paddle club, I was there a lot and I never smelled the porta potty. So I'm I'm a little I I'm not sure when you you ever smelled them, John. We we actually have them serviced every single week. They're cleaned out and taken care of. And and we never had an issue to the point where the Pool and Racket Club, we want to actually keep them. And if we have to apply for a permit to do that until we get the, you know, the bathroom set in the in the house, the Pool and Racket Club would actually like to have porta potties there for our programs in nine through twelve.
All right, and and thank you. I I would like exact specifics of when the septic system was upgraded, because to my knowledge, it's a nineteen sixty two system. And like I said, we we know what kind of septic systems went in nineteen sixty two. I think if we review the minutes from the original meetings, we clearly discussed porta potties and you guys were clear that there were not going to be porta potties, that there was going to be a composting toilet. And it 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 couldn't have been clearer that that was a condition. And then the porta potties came and and never left. And now it's my understanding that you want those to be permanent. And again, my concern is you can't pump those out in the winter. People won't use them. They'll use the woods. I have a child here. You know, my concern is when they stop using those because they can't be pumped out in the winter, you're going to go up and use the dated system that's part of the Pool and Racket Club. And there's going to be further sewage leaking into the wetlands. And again, if it has been upgraded, I'd need to know what upgrades. I'd need to know specifically when it was done. And servicing, I'd need to know what servicing is this. Are we just putting Riddick's down? Are we pumping it out? Are we sending scopes down to visually inspect the system? You know, so I'd need some sort of specifics on all of that before I'm going to be okay with that. And, you know, like I said, I, you know, I I I really, like I said, I really like the club. It's a lot better than I originally anticipated. You know, you guys have been great neighbors. The lights go off at ten o'clock. Like I said, it takes a while before everyone clears out and the safety lights and everything else, you know, remain on long after the ten o'clock. But the 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 bottom line is we were clearly told there were not going to be porta potties there. And there are. Nobody likes. Nobody likes being lied to. And, you know, I probably wouldn't.
Oh, I think I think you maybe should. You you might go back and read our decision that summarizes the testimony. And I have to say we didn't in our decision address porta potties. What we said is that any toilets to be installed have to be operated in accordance with all the rules and the health department. And that a written maintenance plan for toilets should be filed with the Needham Board of Health. And I mean, it really is up to the health department to regulate the toilets and, you know, you know, not our board. I mean, I would hope that the club could give you the information about what they're doing. But, I mean, we did not in our decision restrict porta potties. We just said that anything installed had to be done in accordance with rules and regulations and in compliance with the regulations of the Board of Health.
What happened? Yeah, and I'm fine with that. We were just we were led to believe there were not going to be porta potties there, that there was going to be a composting toilet. And
I mean, I think they understand your point of view and.
Yeah, exactly. And and, you know, and and my concern is if, you know, is with the further expansion, I'd love to see. I'd love to see toilets. I would just like to see them tied into a modern septic system. Or if they are tied into the Needham Pool and Racket Club's septic system, that that be upgraded to a modern system. I mean.
Yeah, well, we're 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 not discussing the expansion tonight. And I think it would be perfectly reasonable if they seek an expansion that that they'd have to give some clarity on the septic system and how they're going to handle all of this.
Yep. And 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 I'll summarize it, you know. They're great neighbors. I have no problem with a fourth court. I do have a problem going later than ten o'clock and I would like.
We're not going to consider that tonight either.
Yeah. And the bottom line.
But I mean, it's useful that they hear from you.
Yeah.
But we're not going to consider extending.
Yeah. And and that's all. And it just and the septic be dealt with in, you know, with a modern system. And that's all.
Okay, Daphne, do we have other neighbors who want to be heard?
There are no hands raised among those attending.
I must say, I'm I'm surprised. But I'm also pleased. I I think I think it it means that Mr. Nectow and his associates have run a good operation. And, you know, we did a reasonable thing by allowing them to go forward. So I don't know if any of the other board members have comments here to.
Well, I appreciate Barry, you giving us an update and Mr. McCarthy for giving you your opinion. And I think it's all been considered. And I think it's 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 I'm impressed with the the backup membership. And it appears through really the lack of comments that the the neighbors are not against it. And so at one time early a year ago, when this was allowed, that there was a number of concerns by the neighbors. But it looks like the the organization has has dealt with those. And you you seem like you've maintained it, avoided late nights and loud parties. And so it seems it looks pretty comfortable here.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. The purpose.
Thanks for coming in. The purpose of the review is exactly what the chairman indicated to gauge how you met the requirements of the special permit, how you're operating and how the butters and neighbors are dealing with it, how they feel and gauge it. We did it with the Field of Dreams and the lights on the music school. This is always an important review process just to make things correct. I agree. Extension of hours and other four court will require an amendment. So I'm impressed. I learned from all this that it's not pickleball. I learned that whatever it is, I'm probably not very good at it, because I tried it.
I believe I've seen you on the court.
Members of the zoning board, we get in there and we check it out. We see
I have pictures.
Exactly.
And I asked Daphne to get rid of that picture. But anyway, I'm impressed with that. And I look forward to hearing your application for an amendment and listening to the neighbors on their concerns.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Friedenberg, you have any?
I would just say this is a tribute to not just the quality of Mr. Nekto's organization, but the superb job done in drafting the original decision.
Yes. All right. So then I'm prepared to close this hearing. And if you decide you want to expand hours or courts, you'll file an amendment and we'll give notice to the neighbors and have another hearing.
So thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for having us.
Be well. Take care.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else we need to do tonight, Daphne?
Should we talk about allocating?
Oh, yeah. How about allocating decisions?
I'll take my motion since no one will understand it. So I'm on one.
You're on number one?
Yeah.
Oh, well, oh, no.
No, 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 not one.
Number one was Highland Avenue. Peter, why don't you do that since that's the one you voted on?
I'll take CodeWiz.
Which one are you taking, Jonathan?
CodeWiz. That was my number one. I came in four minutes late.
CodeWiz, JT. Highland Avenue, Peter, you'll do that? Okay. South Street?
I'll take Hillside. I'll have a run with the
You want to do that or you want to do the
I'll do the
Interpretation of variance.
And I'll send you, I'll send you a copy of the previous interpretation of a variance.
So you and I had talked online, Daphne, it was about the decision. To go into reference some decisions, I think one on Central recently, a couple of different decisions we did recently in twenty-one.
Right, I will send you copies of those. I'll send you the interpretation, the most recent one, the one on
So you want to do that one, Howard?
Please, yeah.
Okay. And I'll do, I think that leaves
South Street.
South Street that I'll do.
The best name, Scallywax.
The paddle tennis, how that works.
That one is just a report.
Is that everything in our agenda?
Just the minutes, okay.
We do.
And then the paddle courts will be, will be the report in the minutes.
Yeah. You know, I don't know exactly. I'll leave it to you to take a crack at it. But, you know, basically, I think we were here to see if we had to impose further conditions because the neighbors were disturbed. And I think the silence indicates that it's turned out all right. So.
Absolutely.
So I'll go ahead and do sort of like a report, that'd just be a report, the report, and then
Okay, just, yeah. I don't think you have to get into a lot of detail.
Report of the report is a good report.
A report of the report. All right, well.
With an executive summary.
Next month, I want to let you know we have three items. One will be the Emory Grover Building. It's going to be coming before the zoning board of appeals. And then also, pardon me, that's thirteen thirteen thirty Highland Ave., which is the historic building where
It's the school department building.
And that will be coming in. The packet is tremendous. And then you're also going to be seeing the temple over on Highland Ave. They purchased the two properties, so that those two, and then you have a third garage.
What property did they purchase?
Both. They purchased
The school.
The one that's on Webster and one on Greendale. And so the apartment's in the middle. It's sort of now the property is a U shape.
Interesting. We might have several conflicts.
Correct. There's three of you, I believe, are members of the temple.
But my kids went to the Needham Public School, so I think that's one there. Now, it was, I was an attorney for them at the time when I recused myself on the last one. I don't necessarily have a concern just being
I mean, my suggestion would be that I take it Nick is not a member of the temple. And I'm not. And then that that one of you can hopefully choose to serve, I think.
I'd be happy to do it, except that I used to serve as their attorney. That's my only concern.
We will be making sure that we'll clear whoever is going to be participating.
I think whoever's going to do it needs to send a letter to the selectmen.
We'll be managing that with our town attorney, and I'll be keeping in touch with you and keep, keep, make sure that everybody, the people who are involved.
I mean, my recollection from the last time around was that Dave Tobin got a interpretation that, you know, simply being a member of the temple did not disqualify someone for serving unless you had some, unless what we were doing was going to affect your financial obligations. But there's a backup process under which you can notify the selectmen. And, you know, frankly, we can't act without one of you serving.
So Howard, you're not a board member. Peter, you're not a board member, right? You're not trustee or a board member.
All right.
So those, those guys are absolutely free. And it's actually a legal thing. That's my, my thing. So
Has started on this and it will get you up to speed.
How about the school conflict? You don't see that?
Well, what does the school, what does the school building want?
They are coming in for a parking waiver, parking design waiver, and also alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming building because there's four stories and it exceeds the height. So those are the three issues that they're coming for you.
Interior alterations?
It's all, it's exterior interior renovations. So it's a preservation, it's going to be a preservation, a very, you know, very, you know, it's coming out of the building design committee, you know, the department.
Is this for the administration? Is that what it's going to be?
So I just wanted to let you know
You said there's a third thing?
Yes, a single garage on Garden Street. A third garage.
Again, let me ask you a question. So the Muzzy Ford complex is being rebuilt. Is that under the planning board jurisdiction?
It turns out that because of the items, it's going to be coming before the zoning board of appeals. And it has to, so they have, there is some kind of bureaucratic thing that the planning board has to decide. But it was determined by the building commissioner and also the director of building and design as well as the, you know, the planning director, that this is the obvious route to take. So
This is for Emory Grover?
Yeah, for the Emory Grover Building. But anyway, we will see you all next month. And you're going to have very sizable packets. Did you guys have any issues with the electronic packet through the link?
No, I got mine, I got my regular email. It came through. Just the capacity was fine.
Yeah, my email, my email came through, but I looked at some of it preview and waited until I got the hard copy to look at it more carefully.
I think the other ones are going to be very large. And, you know, let me, I'm going to try to get the stuff to you. If you want large rollout copies, I can get those for you for both projects. But I looked at the eleven by seventeens and they look pretty good. But, you know, if any of you want the large rolled copies, you know, large plans, I can get those to you. Because they're both substantial projects. All right. So we will see you next month.
Thank you.
And welcome back, John. Welcome back.
Yeah, well, I went out and played eight holes of golf today, and now I know why I go to Arizona for the
It was cold today.
A little cold and windy.
All right. Thank you. Good night.
Take care.